Morning, everyone. We have established a quorum. I've asked all guests and visitors to please retire behind the rail. The members appear to have taken their seats, so we'll get started. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Reverend Dr. Charles R. Leonard of St. Mark's Lutheran Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Bass. I would ask all guests and visitors and members to please rise.
It is a privilege to be in the house this morning. I would like that we take a moment, being this is the 9/11 observance, that we take a moment just for silence, for a moment for those who lost their lives at the World Trade Center and those who also dedicated their lives trying to save and assist in the tragedy. If we'd have a moment of silence, please. Oh God, we pray this day. We pray for this nation. We pray for our government, our president, we pray for our state governments, and we pray for the city governments all around the nation, especially for this government, city government, the City of Philadelphia. We ask this day for your blessing upon the work of our lawmakers as they begin this new session of city council. We pray, give them wisdom, give them a sense of compassion, give them humility as they work to solve the problems of the City of Philadelphia. We pray that the decisions that are made in this session will be decisions that will better this place, this city, for the lives of many others, for the children, the families, for the seniors who reside here, that this become a better place, a model city, for the nation and the world. Help these lawmakers to work together, to work together for the common good for the residents of this city. Let it be a goal of all the lawmakers in the chamber, to live, in the words of the prophet Micah, that they work towards to do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly with God. These things we ask in the name of the most high God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council will be at ease. Thank you all very much. Thank you so much. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, June 19, 2014. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June 19, 2014, be approved.
It has been moved in property second, that the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, June 19, 2014, stand approved. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is a request for leaves of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and welcome back, not that you ever left. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Thank you. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
President. Press for leave of absence.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome and thank everyone here today who has found time in their day to come down and witness your government in action. We hope that your stay here today is a pleasurable one. We hope that you learned a little something today, and we really hope that your stay is so pleasurable that you come back again. So again, thank you so much for being here. And I just want to say to my colleagues, I'm not going to say welcome back, because we've pretty much seen each other all summer long, but welcome back in this room. All right. This time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee, who will present a resolution on my behalf to the Leon H. Sullivan Charitable Trust. With Ms. Mabel Wellborn and those accompanying her, please join the Councilman at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a pleasure to present this resolution commemorating the 35th anniversary of the Leon H. Sullivan Human Services Center. Whereas the Leon H. Sullivan Human Services Center, formerly known as Progress Home Services Center, is a $3 million facility located at 1415 North Broad Street, made possible through a grant from the U.S. Economic Development Administration and a loan from Fidelity Bank of Philadelphia. And whereas the 67,000-square-foot, two-story center, designed and constructed uniquely as a one-stop human services facility, housing a number of public and private direct service agencies, was dedicated September 12, 1978, and...
Whereas for the past 35 years, under the ownership and management of African-Americans, the center has been an easily accessible and affordable location for the providers... And whereas, the initial tenants, I started in the wrong place, sorry. Whereas the initial tenants included the Philadelphia Youth Conservation Services, Philadelphia Human Relations Office, Philadelphia Youth Commission, Philadelphia Youth Services Commission, the State Bureau of Employment Security and Opportunities Academy of Management Training. And whereas for the past 35 years, under the ownership and management of African-Americans, the center has been an easily accessible and affordable location for the providers of basic human and social services to the citizens of Philadelphia. And whereas previous tenants included the Social Security Administration, Philadelphia Police Academy, Bureau of Unemployment Security, Young Scholars Charter School, Walter D. Palmer Leadership Learning Partners Charter School, Opportunities Academy of Management Training, African-American Chamber of Commerce, Volunteers of America, General Services Administration, City of Philadelphia Department of License and Inspections, and the Philadelphia Allied Action Committee, and... Whereas the center's current tenants collectively have approximately 300 full-time and part-time employees in logs, on average, 2,000 to 2,500 visitors monthly. Current tenants include the Philadelphia Youth Network, Vision Quest, Progressive Life Center, OIC of America, Campaign for Working Families, Spectrum Health Services, Credence Home Health Agency, National Black Leadership Initiative on Cancer, Temple Center for Asian Health, and Michael Hannowitz, LCSW. And whereas the Leon H. Sullivan Charitable Trust, whose mission in part is to create economic and community development opportunities by using its resources to advocate on behalf of impoverished people, helps subsidize the cost of maintaining the center's accessibility and affordability for providers of social and human services.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby commemorates the 35th anniversary of the Leon H. Sullivan Human Services Center. Be it further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Mabel Wellborn and members of the Leon H. Sullivan Trust Board of Trustees as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. This is a resolution introduced by myself for Council President Clark and carries the support of all members of the City Council. Thank you all for all the services you've provided.
Chair recognizes Ms. Wellborn for remarks.
Mr. President, distinguished members and citizens present, good morning. On behalf of the Leon H. Sullivan Charitable Trust and its Board of Trustees, we thank you for this, from this august body, such a resolution. Dr. Sullivan was the consummate advocate for social and economic empowerment for all people. Just as Hannibal saw no Alps, he believed that there should be no obstacles to a meaningful quality of life for all people. He believed that all people should be able to dream and have an opportunity to achieve their dreams. It was this belief that influenced the development of the Human Services Center. To our knowledge, the Leon H. Sullivan Human Services Center, dedicated September 12, 1978, is the only one of its kind continually owned and operated by African-Americans. The Sullivan Human Services Center, an accessible urban location with a suburban campus atmosphere, is the site of choice for the following service providers. Achieving Independence, a nationally recognized leader in youth workforce development; Vision Quest, a comprehensive national youth service organization; Progressive Life Center, a statewide adoption network affiliate servicing children and families; Campaign for Working Families, offering ways to improve the economic status of working people, and is the largest VITA service provider of free tax preparation in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania; Spectrum Health Services provides an organized, comprehensive program of primary care, social and health education, as well as promotions and prevention programs; Credence Home Care Agency, a Medicare, Medicaid-certified home health care provider servicing Philadelphia and the surrounding counties; the National Black Leadership Initiative on Cancer promotes awareness among African-Americans and the African diaspora about cancer prevention and early detection; Temple Center for Asian Health is one of the first in the nation dedicated to raising the physical and mental health, social issues of Asian-Americans; Mothers in Charge is a nationally recognized organization focusing on violence prevention, education, and the intervention for families and community organizations; OIC of America was created to provide quality education, training, employment, and housing through a national network across the country; and lastly, Michael Hannowitz, a licensed social worker who specializes in providing psychotherapy for victims of trauma, anxiety, depression, and other emotional challenges. I want to thank my colleagues, my trustee Donald Duckey-Birds, our tenant Mary Arthur, who is the Director of the Campaign for Working Families, and Stacy Johnson, who is the Director for Vision Quest. Tomorrow, the spotlight will be on the service providers of the Human Service Center, beginning at 11:00 a.m. at 1415 North Broad Street with an open house. We will pay particular attention to those service providers who have helped the Leon H. Sullivan Charitable Trust maintain its mission on providing social and human services. You're invited to the first-ever open house tomorrow from 11:00 to 3:00. On behalf of these outstanding service providers and the Leon H. Sullivan Charitable Trust, we thank you for this acknowledgement. It is the inspiration for us to continue for another 35 years. We thank you.
Thank you. Council will be at ease. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. The next order of business is Communications. Request that the Sergeant of Arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Thank you. Mr. Decker, would you please read those messages from the mayor?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4, 604, and 2307 of the Homero Charter, and today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills, bill numbers 140487, 140605, and 140606. And I am pleased to advise you that on June 19, June 27, August 5, and September 10, 2014, I signed the remaining bills that were passed by Council at a session on June 12, 2014, and that on June 19, June 27, July 15, July 30, August 5, September 3, and September 10, 2014, I signed all the bills that were passed by Council at a session on June 19, 2014, except bill numbers 130950 and 140377. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution approving the redevelopment contract and disposition supplement of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment, and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban newer area identified by house number and street address is 2031 through 33 North 17th Street. And an ordinance authorizing the plotting upon a portion of City Plan Number 297 of a right-of-way for sewer and drainage purposes abutting the southeasterly side of Keely Court, southwest of Henry Avenue. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 238 by striking from the City Plan of Vacating Hall Street from 5th Street to its terminus westwardly therefrom. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 358 by striking from the City Plan of Vacating Jameson Avenue from Red Lion Road to its terminus southwestwardly therefrom, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional messages?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Kinney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one non-privileged resolution, and I wish to be recognized after the title of the recall resolution is read for a motion on that resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman, you want to wait until...
I needed a suspension...
You want to do it now?
...in order to get it on the calendar later.
A resolution requesting the mayor to return to Council Bill Number 140377 entitled an ordinance submitting Title 10 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity by adding a new Chapter 102100 entitled Marijuana Possession to create a civil penalty for the possession of certain items and to provide four penalties for enforcement procedures for violations of such provisions for the purpose of reconsideration by the Council of the vote by which said bill passed Council.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kinney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
It has been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that will be considered at today's final council consideration. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce two bills.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance demanding Chapter 191300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Real Estate Taxes by extending the deadline for filing applications for the homestead exclusion.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance demanding Section 9206 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Vendors in Neighborhood Business Districts by creating the Woodland Avenue Business District for sidewalk vending.
That bill will also be referred to committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill and one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 15 Streets. These will be more Avenue, Ridge Avenue, 25th Street, and Diamond Street.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution commemorating the 35th anniversary of the Leon H. Sullivan Human Services Center.
And that will be on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Taskoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and two, one bill and two privileged resolutions, and I'd like to speak on the one regarding domestic violence.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on the 5600 to 7200 blocks of Rising Sun Avenue both sides.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring Charmaine Madlock Turner on her 15 years of service as President and CEO of the Urban Affairs Coalition.
Councilwoman, you want to do it at the time of the vote?
I want, on the next one, yes, I can do that.
When we do the vote. Okay, the next one.
And a privileged resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
I'm sorry, I didn't, say that again?
And a privileged resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Okay. And that will be on today's final passage calendar. And Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance demanding Section 9213 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Farmers Markets by revising provisions relating to the operation of farmers' markets on both sides of the 3500 block of Ryan Avenue from Frankfurt Avenue and extending 156 feet northwest of the northwest line of Frankfurt Avenue.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance demanding Section 10602 of the Philadelphia Code, known as the Clean Indoor Air Work Protection Law, by providing a limited period of time during which certain drinking establishments may apply for and obtain a waiver of the provisions of the section prohibiting smoking in certain places.
That bill will be referred to committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I have two bills and one privileged resolution. The Tanyi Resolution is sponsored by all members of council.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance demanding Chapter 10800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Safety by revising the penalties for the selling of any gun or implement that is not a firearm which forcefully impels a pellet of any kind.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance demanding Chapter 193900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Tax Exemptions for Longtime Owners, Owner Occupants of Residential Properties by amending the eligibility requirements to allow certain individuals who purchased their homes as part of government-subsidized affordable housing initiatives to receive tax exemptions for longtime owner occupants of residential properties.
And that bill will also be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring, recognizing, and commending the Philadelphia Tany Dragons, 2014 Mid-Atlantic Little League Champions, for capturing the hearts of fans across the nation during their inspiring journey as the first-ever Philadelphia Little League team to make it to the Little League World Series.
And that resolution will... Thank you. That resolution will be on today's final passage calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want my Monet jersey for that day. I have no bills for resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes newly minted Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one privileged resolution, and I also have one bill on behalf of yourself and me.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
An ordinance demanding Chapter 17104 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Prerequisites to the Execution of City Contracts by requiring city contractors and subcontractors to use best efforts to provide goods made in Philadelphia, made in Pennsylvania, or made in America when fulfilling city contract requirements, and requiring quarterly reports indicating the cost and place of origin and/or manufacturer for goods supplied pursuant to city contracts, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. And that bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Michael Iac Iacanelli for winning the Bassmaster Elite Series Tournament on the Delaware River.
And that resolution will be on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution urging the United States Department of Defense to include the names of the 74 fallen sailors of the destroyer USS Frankie Evans on the Vietnam Veterans Memorial.
That resolution will be on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills. The first bill is co-sponsored by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance demanding Chapter 171600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Economic Opportunity Plans to require that each economic opportunity plan include information concerning the equity ownership as defined of, one, the contractor developer and/or recipient of financial assistance required to submit the plan, and, two, participants as defined engaged in, by the contractor developer, and/or recipient of financial assistance, and, three, the eventual owner or owners of the project or contract to which the plan relates.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance demanding Chapter 192600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receipts Taxes to revise the credit for new job creation by changing the minimum wage requirement in the definition of new job, and by providing an additional special tax credit opportunity for job creation in the form of a multi-year credit for certain new jobs created in... credit for certain new jobs created in two thousand fifteen.
That bill will also be referred to the appropriate committee, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. Today I offer up two resolutions, one privilege and one non-privileged resolution. The non-privileged resolutions were co-sponsored by members Kenny and Bass, and the privileged resolution was co-sponsored by council members Kenny, Squilla Sanchez, and Bass. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Streets and Services to hold public hearings to examine the culture enforcement practices, prevention measures, and potential solutions needed to address the epidemic of illegal dumping in Philadelphia.
That resolution will be on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution supporting President Barack Obama and the Environmental Protection Agency's Clean Power Plan that will help reduce carbon pollution from existing power plants throughout the United States.
That resolution will be on next week's final passage calendar, and the chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. I have, uh, four bills, one co-sponsored by you and myself, two privileged resolutions, and one non-privileged resolution today.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electives of the City of Philadelphia. The proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment of the Philadelphia Homero Charter relating to the creation, funding, appointment, powers, and duties of a police advisory commission.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance repealing Chapter Twelve, Twenty, Twenty-One, Twelve Hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Police Advisory Board and replacing it with a new Chapter Twenty-One, Twelve Hundred that reconstitutes and renames the board as the Police Advisory Commission.
Um, Mr. Decker? I was distracted. Is that a resolution? Thank you. That bill will also be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Section Nine, Two Oh Three of the Philadelphia Code entitled Street Vendors by providing for the inspection and regulation of mobile food vehicles that use propane or other combust, combustible fuel, adding definitions, providing for enforcement and penalties, and making technical changes.
And that bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the plotting upon a portion of City Plan Number two ninety-seven of a right-of-way for sewer and drainage purposes abutting the southeasterly side of Keely Court, southwest of Henry Avenue.
And that will also be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Paulette Brown Esquire for her recent election as the first African-American woman to become president-elect of the American Bar Association.
And that resolution will be on today's final passage calendar, and the chair recognizes Councilman, oh, I'm sorry, one more.
And a non-privileged resolution supporting the National Minority Business Development Agency and recognizing the thirtieth anniversary of Philadelphia Minority Enterprise Development Week from the twenty-ninth of September through the fourth of October for providing critical information to foster the growth and competitiveness of minority business community.
Thank you, and that will be on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Homero Charter to provide for the creation, funding, appointment, powers, and duties of an independent police advisory commission for, as the citizen oversight agency for the Philadelphia Police Department.
Mm-hmm, and that resolution will be referred to the appropriate committee, and the chair can recognize this Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, Councilman Squilla on the propane bill is a co-sponsor.
It shall be noted. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill on behalf of myself and Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance amending Chapter Fourteen, Six Hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use Regulations to revise the boundaries of Area One and Area Two as defined in Section, subsection Fourteen, Six Oh Three, sub-paragraph five, sub-paragraph A, sub-paragraph point two.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee, and the chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Counsel, could I please? Thank you, Mr. President. I'll tell you all for six bills and two non-privileged resolutions, and I wish to be recognized after the title of recall resolution to read for a motion on that resolution.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Spruce Street, Fourth Street, Pine Street, Second Street, South Street, Third Street, Lombard Street, Fifth Street, Pine Street, and Sixth Street.
I'm sorry, that bill shall be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Oregon Avenue, Delaware Expressway, and Front Street.
That bill will also be referred to committee.
And an ordinance amending Section Ten, Six Oh Two of the Philadelphia Code known as the Clean Indoor Air Worker Protection Law by providing a limited period of time during which drinking establishments may apply for and obtain a waiver of the provisions of the section prohibiting smoking in certain places.
Will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance amending Title Twelve of the Philadelphia Code entitled Traffic Code to change the amount of time that a boat, motorhome, truck, camper, or vending cart may be parked in any on-street parking space.
Will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number two thirty-eight by striking from the City Plan of Vacating Hall Street from Fifth Street to its terminus westwardly therefrom.
Will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Cedar Street, Vinegar Street, Gaul Street, and Tioga Street.
And that will also be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to conduct hearings concerning the time and financial costs of standardizing testing administered to Philadelphia public school students, as well as the effects of testing and teaching on, teaching and learning.
And that resolution will be on the final passage calendar today.
And a non-privileged resolution requesting the mayor to return to council Bill Number one three oh nine five oh entitled an ordinance amending the Philadelphia Code to provide for, for the authorization of certain pedestrian enhancements to occupy by license or a portion of the right-of-way for the purpose of reconsideration by the council of the vote by which said bill passed council.
And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Swilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to make consideration of resolution on today's final passage calendar.
It has been moved on property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that will be reconsidered at today's final passage calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two privileged resolutions and one non-privileged, co-sponsored by council members Squilla and Maria Quinones Sanchez.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
A privileged resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs to hold public hearings regarding the current state of park and street trees and their continued maintenance.
That resolution will be on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution congratulating and honoring the Mount Airy Schools Coalition for, for upgrading the Eleanor C. Emlyn Elementary School's computer lab.
That resolution will also be on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution designating and recognizing September two thousand fourteen as Library Card Sign-Up Month in Philadelphia.
And that resolution will be on today's final passage calendar, and the chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and one privileged resolution. The bill is co-sponsored by all members of city council, and, uh, the resolution is also, uh, supported by all members of city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
And an ordinance amending Title Nineteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance, Taxes, and Collections by providing for expanded tax credit for employment of veterans.
That will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution urging further action to enact legislation to designate the Medical Center of the Department of Veterans Affairs located at Thirty-Nine Hundred Woodland Avenue in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania as the Corporal Michael J. Cresence Department of Veterans Affairs Medical Center.
That will be on next week's final passage calendar. Is that it? Is that it, Mr. Decker? Is that it? Yeah, true. Thank you. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and at this time, we will move to our reports from committees, and today there are no reports from committee. So the next order of business is the consideration of the calendar, as there are no bills on the first reading calendar. The chair now recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up for second reading and final passage calendar today. Numbers, one four zero six one four, one four zero six one five, one four zero six one six, one four zero six one seven, one four zero six two three, one four zero six two seven, one four zero five eleven, one four zero five fifteen, and one four zero five sixteen. All of the resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Before considering these bills or resolutions, we will have public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested today in testifying on a bill or resolution on the final passage calendar today, we'd ask that you sign up at the table to my left if you have not already done so. When your name is called, you will go to the podium. Um, there will, there's a device on the podium. When the light turns green on that device, it is your time to speak. When it turns yellow, you have thirty seconds to conclude your remarks. When it turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks, or you will be given three minutes to speak. At this time, Mr. Decker, can you please call the name of the first individual who is interested in testifying today?
Nancy Nguyen.
I hope that's no one trying to fix the microphone.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the council.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Nguyen, and I'm the Executive Director of BPSOS Delaware Valley. We are a nonprofit, nonpartisan, community organization based here in Philadelphia. We are a branch of a national Vietnamese-American community organization with the mission to empower, organize, and equip Vietnamese individuals and communities in their pursuit of liberty and dignity. Thank you for your time, for taking the time today to consider what BPSOS believes is a very important issue, local democratic control of public schools. My remarks today will focus on not only the failure of state governance of Philadelphia schools, but also the possibilities of shared governance to rectify our current existing educational crisis. As an organization founded on the search for freedom, we hold vested interests in seeing the ability of, ability of individuals and communities to participate in the democratic process over the institutions which governs their lives. More precisely, we wish to see the institutions governed by the people and governed for the people. We became active... Thank you. We became active as an organization in advocating and organizing around public education after an incident which occurred in South Philadelphia High School in two thousand and nine. On December third, two thousand and nine, upwards of thirty Asian immigrant students were attacked at and around school, resulting in thirteen students seeking treatment in area hospitals. These Asian students were assaulted because it was perceived that they were, we were foreigners, taking up whatever little educational resources were even available for American students. We realized that after many conversations with students and community members that this event was not simply an isolated incident, but was a direct result of mismanaged institution, institutional resources with an unacceptably low amount of resources for actually all students. School violence is a daily reality for many schools throughout the city of Philadelphia, and it is certainly not limited to student-on-student violence. School violence extends itself to the assault on quality education through the refusal of resources to students, especially English language learners, for instance. School violence extend itself to the inability to provide a decent quality of life for teachers, and it certainly extends itself beyond the school when it better prepares our students for entry into prisons rather than colleges, jobs, and careers. What we need to consider here in light of school violence and educational depravity is the question of how schools are governed. If it is within our belief that an institution that directly determines the life probabilities of our youth should be held accountable by the communities and families in which it affects, then we maintain that the Vietnamese community, like every other community in the city of Philadelphia, has the right to hold their schools accountable. We urge the city council to vote affirmatively for the local controls ballot question on the basis of the immediate crisis. The immediate ongoing edgenous crisis, educational crisis, and the failure of effective governance demands us, as members of the cities, to reclaim the democratic process so that we can determine how our schools ought to provide for our children. We say the time is now. We say let the people vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Secretary.
Commenting on one four oh five one four and one four oh five two seven.
Good morning.
Good morning.
City council members and guests. My name is Catherine Blunt. I am a retired principal and teacher. I worked with the school district for forty-three years, and I am here to encourage this council to support giving, giving city residents the opportunity to express their opinion on November fourth about abolishing the School Reform Commission, otherwise known as the SRC, and returning local control of Philadelphia public schools to Philadelphia, its parents, its residents, its communities, and other stakeholders in Philadelphia who are interested in promoting equal and quality education for the students of our city. A petition was signed by twenty thousand registered voters, and it urged the following. All appropriate city officials are hereby vested with the duty and the responsibility to take all appropriate step to the, steps to the fullest extent allowable under law to promote and defend the will and mandate of the people, and that mandate was embodied and is embodied in Resolution Four, Zero, One Four Zero Five Two Seven and Bill One Four Zero Five One Four. It is clear after thirteen years of SRC control that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, when under leadership hostile to Philadelphia, has held our children and our educational system hostage to a state and national political whims and aspirations. Our educational system, the largest in the state, is not supported and is often neglected despite its overwhelming economic needs. This is called benign neglect, and that means that the people who are responsible neglect to provide for those that it is in charge of. And just as separate but equal was found unequal under constitutional law, benign neglect in reality is neither kind or harmless. We urge you, aye, on behalf of the citizens of Philadelphia and those twenty thousand registered voters, voters, I urge you to vote yea on this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
No. Councilman Johnson? You had your light on. Did you want to speak? The chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge a group that's here today that does work similar to the work that I'm doing specifically in the area of Point Breeze, promoting affordable housing. That's the Philadelphia Coalition for Affordable Communities, advocating for the development of, advocating for development, not displacement. Could we give them a round of applause for joining us today?
Ashton, please stand up. Thank you, Councilman. There being no additional speaker... There being no additional speakers, we will now consider the bills and resolutions on the final passage calendar today. Mr. Decker, would you please read the title of 140614?
A resolution authorizing the commission of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled associated on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 29th and 47th wards of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 615.
A resolution authorizing the commission of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled associated on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 32nd ward of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 140616.
A resolution authorizing the commission of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled associated on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 47th ward of the city of Philadelphia.
And the chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and Resolution 140616 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 140617.
A resolution authorizing the commission of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled associated on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 48th ward of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and Resolution 140617 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 140623.
A resolution urging the United States Congress to support the redesignation of the railroad station located at 2955 Market Street, commonly known as 30th Street Station, to the William H. Gray III 30th Street Station.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption.
Been moved in property second. Are there all those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and Resolution 140623 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 140627.
A resolution authorizing the commission of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled associated on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 11th ward of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
For the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. Are there all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and Resolution 140627 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 140511. Let it be noted that there is a two-thirds vote required for that bill.
An ordinance authorizing the bond committee to sell at public or private negotiated sale to provide funds toward various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations to the sinking fund commission. For the payment of such bonds, authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds in connection with issuance of the bonds and certain other actions, providing for obtaining the consent of the electors to increasing the indebtedness of the city.
This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call and roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Kenny, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conradine Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tascow, Council President Clark.
Aye. Eyes are seventeen, and ayes are zero. Two-thirds of the members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 140515.
An ordinance submitting Chapter 16800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Philadelphia Affordable Housing Opportunity Zones by designating the Cecil B. Moore Avenue Housing Opportunity Zone pursuant to the 1500 New Affordable Housing Units Initiative.
This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call and roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Kenny, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conradine Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tascow, Council President Clark.
Aye. Eyes are seventeen, and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 140516.
An ordinance establishing a new chapter of the Philadelphia Code entitled Philadelphia Affordable Workforce Housing Opportunity Zones, authorizing the designation of the city in whole or in part as a workforce housing opportunity zone, establishing definitions and authorizing disposition of publicly-owned zone properties for nominal consideration.
This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call and roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Kenny, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conradine Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tascow, Council President Clark.
Aye. Eyes are seventeen, and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Thank you. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing the mayor to return, requesting the mayor to return to Council Bill Number 140377 entitled an ordinance submitting Title 10 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity by adding a new chapter entitled 102100 entitled Marijuana Possession to create a civil penalty for the possession of certain items and to provide for penalties, enforcement procedures, violations of such provisions, all under certain terms and conditions, for the purpose of reconsideration by the council of the vote by which said bill passed council. Introduced by Councilman Kenny.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of special business at this time.
It's been moved in property second. Not yet. It's for the adoption.
Let me back up.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and the resolution has been adopted.
And a resolution commemorating the 35th anniversary of the Leon H. Sullivan Human Services Center, introduced by Councilman Greenlee on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Been moved in property second. Are there all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring Charmaine Matlock Turner on her fifteen years of service as president and CEO of the Urban Affairs Coalition, introduced by Councilwoman Tascow.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tascow.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. Are there all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, introduced by Councilwoman Tascow.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Tascow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to speak on this resolution.
Please do.
More than three women a day. Let me repeat, more than three women a day. More than three women a day are murdered by their husbands or boyfriends in the United States due to domestic violence. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention found that women experience two million injuries from intimate partner violence each year. Here in Philadelphia, the police department responded to more than 100,000 domestic abuse calls last year. Clearly, domestic violence is a national and local problem. Recent events in the sports world have brought the issue of domestic violence to the forefront. However, and based on these statistics, numerous women suffer in silence or seclusion from all this crisis. Unfortunately, and after the media moves on to the next news cycle, domestic violence will probably not be in the headlines. Yet, this body, this city council, and certainly long before I came on, has consistently and on annually basis been strong supporters of domestic violence victims and those that provide comfort and assistance. Accordingly, I am introducing this resolution today to declare October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, to raise awareness regarding this crisis. Hopefully, and by keeping people informed regarding domestic violence, we can reduce the number of victims that suffer in our city, state, and nation. And certainly, Mr. President, we need to find a way, and I think in some instances there are programs for men who are abusers. And so, this is a critical issue, and this council has consistently, as I've said, recognized the issue of domestic violence and issued a resolution every year. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman, and unfortunately, it takes a noteworthy person to become in a public way, when we take notice of something that happens every day of our lives, to people who don't have the level of notoriety as the obvious individual in the, I'm not going to say his name today, in the NFL. But this is clearly a very significant issue that we must come to grips with. So, that, Councilwoman, did you make your motion?
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. Are there all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that motion is adopted.
And a resolution honoring, recognizing, and commending the Philadelphia Taney Dragons, 2014 Mid-Atlantic Little League Champions, for capturing the hearts of fans across the nation during their inspiring journey as the first-ever Philadelphia Little League team to make it to the Little League World Series, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. Are there all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Michael "I" Caneli for winning the Bass Master Elite Series Tournament on the Delaware River, introduced by Councilman Nielsen.
And the chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen.
I move for the adoption of the resolution, Mr. President.
It's been moved in property second. Are there all those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Streets and Services to hold public hearings to examine the culture, enforcement practices, prevention measures, and potential solutions needed to address the epidemic of illegal dumping in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. Are there all those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Paulette Brown Esquire for her recent election as the first African-American woman to become president-elect of the American Bar Association, introduced by Councilman Jones.
And the chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. Are there all those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution supporting the National Minority Business Development Agency and recognizing the 30th anniversary of Philadelphia Minority Enterprise Development Week from the 29th of September through the 4th of October 2014 for providing critical information to foster the growth and competitiveness of the minority business community, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. Are there all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to conduct hearings concerning the time and financial costs of standardizing testing administered to Philadelphia public school students, as well as the effects of testing on teaching and learning, introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. Are there all those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution requesting the mayor to return to Council Bill Number 130950 entitled an ordinance submitting the Philadelphia Code to provide for the authorization of certain pedestrian enhancements to occupy by license a portion of the right-of-way for the purpose of reconsideration by the council of the vote by which said bill passed council, introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the rules of council be suspended to make consideration of this special business at this time. Second.
Counsel, just make a motion for the adoption now, and then we'll come back to that.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Yeah. It's been moved in property second. Are there all those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that motion, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs to hold public hearings regarding the current state of park and street trees and their continued maintenance, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Been moved in property second. Are there all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution congratulating and honoring the Mount Airy Schools Coalition for upgrading the Eleanor C. Emlyn Elementary Schools Computer Lab, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. Are there all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution designating and recognizing September 2014 as Library Card Sign-Up Month in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Been moved in property second. Are there all those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is also adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes the calendar. Now, the chair recognizes Councilman Squilla for a motion regarding special business.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the rules of council be suspended to make consideration of this special business at this time. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and the motion passes. Mr. Decker, please read the letter from the mayor.
To the President and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am returning here with as requested by your resolution adopted September 11, 2014, Bill Number 130950, entitled an ordinance amending the Philadelphia Code to provide for the authorization of certain pedestrian enhancements to occupy by license a portion of the right-of-way for the purpose of reconsideration by the council of the vote by which said bill passed council.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla for a motion that council reconsider the vote by which Bill Number 130950 was passed.
So moved, Mr. President. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and the majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the motion carries, and the vote by which Bill Number 130950 was passed has been reconsidered. The chair now again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer an amendment to the Bill Number 130950. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of that amendment. Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the amendment to Bill Number 130950 be adopted. All those in favor say aye? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and Bill Number 130950 has been amended. This bill will be placed on our final passage and second reading at our next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilman Kenny regarding special business on... Councilman Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the rules of council be suspended, permit consideration of special business at this time.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of special business at this time. All those in favor say aye? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and Mr. Decker will please read the letter from the mayor.
To the President and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am returning here with as requested by your resolution adopted September 11, 2014, Bill Number 140377 entitled, an ordinance submitting Title 10 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity by adding a new chapter, 102100, entitled Marijuana Possession, to create a civil penalty for the possession of certain items and to provide for penalties and enforcement procedures for violations of such provisions, for the purpose of reconsideration by the council of the vote by which said bill passed council.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Kenny for a motion to council reconsider the vote by which Bill Number 140377 was passed.
So moved, Mr. President. Second.
It's been moved in... All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and the majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the motion carries, and the vote by which Bill Number 140377 was passed has been reconsidered. The chair again recognizes Councilman Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer an amendment to Bill Number 140377. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of that amendment.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second that the amendment to Bill Number 140377 be adopted. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and Bill Number 140377 has been amended. This bill will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar at the next session of council. That completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? And the chair recognizes Councilman O.
President, I would just ask a moment to talk about the PHL Live, which is, as many of us have, a project from my office, but as chair of the Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy, this project was really a project to emphasize the importance of music as an industry and as employment opportunity in our as employment opportunity in our city. And the project kind of grew on its own and that has a little to do with me and a lot to do with music professionals, musicians, and folks in our city who really seized on the opportunity to try to bring more jobs and employment to folks in our city who are amazingly talented and for those who would like an opportunity to begin going down a road of perhaps being discovered and developed towards the future. And so, with that, PHL Live Center Stage has become, I think, a really outstanding opportunity. Anybody can do it. It's free. They just record themselves, load their video to our website, phllive.org, and they're done. After that, Grammy Award-winning, Grammy-nominated judges will review their videos and pull out five finalists and the finalists will perform live at some of Philadelphia's best venues. And I've put some paperwork on everybody's desk with the hopes that they will tell their constituents, family, and friends about this opportunity. The videos have to be submitted by September the thirtieth. And after the live performance on December the fifth, all the musicians will be invited to the Trocadero where they'll be brought onstage and a winner in each of ten categories announced. And the people will vote on a people's choice. That's eleven categories. And thanks to the volunteer effort and donations by interested folks, including Susan Slosson on behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation, Helen Haynes on behalf of the Office of Arts, Culture, and Creative Economy, and other corporate contributors, we're able to provide each winner one thousand dollars and the amazing prize of having a concert with a world-class headliner at the Dell and other prizes such as studio time and photography and other things. So, it's a great opportunity. Again, I hope people who are interested will submit. They have until September thirtieth. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we commemorate the thirteenth anniversary of the tragic event in nine eleven, I am reminded of all of the brave police officers, firefighters, and emergency responders that lost their lives that day. I'm also reminded about the citizens that lost their life that day. As we honor them today in respect to their courage and service to citizens in New York, Washington, D.C., and here in Pennsylvania, as Chair of the Committee on Public Safety, I have had the fortune to build good working relationship with similar responders here locally within the fire and police departments. I hear about stories every day about officers, sergeants, lieutenants, detectives on the front line in our communities that wake up every day, protect and serve, and all they really want to do after that is go home to their individual families safely. But I'm reminded on the photo of the Justice Center, the scales of justice, and they are balanced or they symbolize fairness. I'm also reminded of the troubles this summer in Ferguson, Missouri, where this summer a young man was shot to death and the result resulted in a community that was torn apart because they did not believe that there was a fair process to lodge complaints and that their issues would be truly heard. As I talked about introducing the Police Advisory Commission Bill, many people reminded me that Philadelphia, Pennsylvania is not Ferguson, Missouri. And I said to them, thank God. But we also need to remember fifty years ago, North Philadelphia was set ablaze because people believed they did not have a fair, transparent process to lodge complaints. And that riot resulted in loss of life, loss of property. And again, thank God, we're not Ferguson, Missouri. But the way that you keep from becoming Ferguson is by having a process that the citizens can believe in, both police officers who don't want to be unfairly charged with things and want a process that is swift to restore their reputation, but also citizens that travel our streets, pay their taxes, and want to feel that if they have a complaint, that it will be treated with dignity and respect in a fully funded, transparent, fair, citizen-controlled process. And I would urge my colleagues that this is not something to be taken lightly. It must be, as my colleague always says, you can act in haste and repent in your leisure. So, we need to think about it deeply. But in order for us to be the beacon that we are, the founding city and the nation, we need to be first to be all we should be by way of offering our citizens a process they can believe in. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's nice to have a full body in attendance here in this legislative body. So, I want to welcome my dear friend, Councilman Nielsen, today and good luck and Godspeed, right? And everything that goes with it. I'm sure we're all going to be proud, you know, you're a hard worker and, you know, you're going to serve Philadelphia well. It's been a while since we all met and it's been a busy summer. So, I'm going to take advantage of this opportunity to thank all my colleagues who participated in a program that I started in two thousand and thirteen called Philly Play. Philly Play is a program that encourages kids, what started off in my district, encouraged kids in the district to engage in active play for sixty minutes a day in our play spaces and recreation centers, which went citywide. So, it evolved and participated in one rec center of each of our ten districts and it wouldn't have happened without the members of this body being the muscle in the community, no pun intended, to try to encourage our kids for healthy play to combat the disease of childhood obesity as well as the chronic diseases that stem from a healthy lifestyle. So, you know, all statistics and policies show that if we encourage our kids to play early, all right, they play healthy and they live healthy lives and they take that in our workplaces so we can have healthy workplaces. We, you know, I'm happy to report, you know, because of everybody's help and participation in Philly Play over the summer, we helped out over three thousand kids at each of those rec centers. We had sixteen pop-up play events throughout the city of Philadelphia. We had a one-day play day on August thirteenth where thirty-four hundred people gathered and played safely and showcased all their skill sets that they've learned through the six weeks of the summer camp and the program Philly Play. So, it is my intention to say that Philly Play and my commitment to Philly Play and addressing these issues with our kids is going to be coming, you know, live on through this summer and you're going to be hearing a little bit more on how it grows and it is a part to every family and any kid that wants to play healthy, any kid that wants an opportunity to play, we're going to continue to try to give them the opportunity to do so here in the city of Philadelphia. So, to all my colleagues and friends here, thank you and stay tuned.
Thank you, Councilman. Congratulations and good work and I'm sure we'll hear about the program again during our budget season. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tasco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Councilman Heenan for coming up with a great idea and we had a wonderful day at the Dorothy Emanuel Rec Center. Hundreds of kids were there playing and exercising and dancing. Of course, my dancing was limited, but we got, they really had a great time and it was a wonderful experience and we're looking forward to it next year. And I guess people say, well, they're on city council, they should be dealing with more serious issues. But to us, kids, young people in our neighborhood, they are the serious issues we deal with because they are our future and we want to look out for them and make sure that they have the facilities where they can go, work, and play. And I want to thank you, Councilman Clark and Councilman Greenlee, for stopping by Sturgis Playground. That's now a recreation center. After eight years, we finally opened the Sturgis Recreation Center on Saturday. Had a wonderful turnout. I want to thank our Recreation Commissioner Susan Slosson for her tireless work and her cooperation. Thank the staff of the Recreation Department who worked so hard moving tree stumps and trying to make the playground look really presentable on Saturday. The Department of Public Property, the staff at Sturgis. And I want to thank all those community folk who came out, especially Jeff Hackett and his sidekick Fran McDonald, who run the Sturgis Advisory Board. And all of the groups and parents who came, the students, young people, male and female, who performed that day. It was a great day. We had Helen Sturgis, who the rec center is named for. She was the moving party back in the day, back in the seventies to get that, it was just a little one-room building starting. Her family all came out. So, it was a wonderful day and I feel real good, the neighbors felt real good at that we've expanded, the neighborhood has expanded with more children and we have a place to go. So, I want to thank all of my colleagues for their support in this effort. And when you get a moment, just go by sixty-second, I can never remember, at sixty-fifth, I can never remember the street's crossroad, the old Cardinal Doherty High School. So, it's a wonderful site. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And thank all of the folks who helped, thank my community for their strong support.
Thank you, Councilman. It's an awesome job. You did a great job. Congratulations. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to join the chorus in extending a personal welcome to Eddie Nielsen, who knew twelve years ago when we were doing our part to then get candidate Governor Rendell elected, that twelve years later, we'd be able to work together in this body. So, kudos, Eddie. Secondly, I want to move back to stage left and refocus on Councilman David O's enormous undertaking he has put together around highlighting and celebrating a spectrum of genres of music from classical to hip-hop to my favorite jazz. And to challenge my district council members to look within their districts because there's so much rich talent in Philly. And too often, they don't hear about huge undertakings like this so that we can get those young people and artists onstage to do what they've been blessed to do. I will be there as a spectator, as I was not blessed with a voice, but I do want to, a singing voice, that is. I do want to congratulate Councilman David O for this enormous undertaking and the huge effort that it represents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I want to say welcome back to all my colleagues and it's good to have a chance to join this distinguished body as we do the good work of the city of Philadelphia. You know, this week, schools started and I want us to continue focusing on making sure that our public service in Harrisburg, on the Democratic side, on the Republican side, including our governor, focus on making sure that the city of Philadelphia, specifically our public schools, receive the type of funding that they need. Schools opened up this week with a lack of maintenance staff, which means our young people are going to dirty schools. Schools have opened up this week with a lack of security forces, which means our children are going to unsafe schools. There's no other pressing issue that the city of Philadelphia...